All right, let me start. I hope everyone can hear me. I'll start by welcoming everybody. This is a public hearing being conducted by the Joint House and Senate Redistricting Committee. Legislature and with me tonight is the co-chair of the committee, Delegate Gary Howell from Mineral County, and I'm Charles Trump. I'm the Senate Chair. Delegate Howell is the House Chair. And I'll just give a few brief introductory remarks before we start. What this is an exercise, the redistricting is an exercise that the legislature is constitutionally required to do every 10 years following the decennial census of the United States. The West Virginia Legislature is required under the state constitution to draw and enact new maps for the West Virginia House of Delegates and the districts members of the House will be elected, the West Virginia Senate and those districts, and districts for the United States House of Representatives. And we have, as probably everyone knows, this year, we're going to lose one of our three congressional districts. We have three in West Virginia. We've had three for the last 20 years. But for the next 10 years, West Virginia will have only two congressional districts and two members of the United States House of Representatives. And so about six weeks, maybe closer to two months ago now, we started on a process of conducting public hearings. And we've conducted a dozen public hearings all around the state in person. And we decided that this year it would be a good idea to attempt to conduct some public hearings across this digital platform to allow people to address members of the Joint Redistricting Committee and share with us your ideas, thoughts about what the legislature should do and how we should construct and draw districts that will apply for the next 10 years. And so this is actually the second scheduled digital meeting, but it is the first one during which we have actually people who have signed up to speak. And so in addition to Delegate Howell, I know there are also members of the West Virginia Senate and the West Virginia House of Delegates who are connected in, members of the Joint Redistricting Committee. But I'm unable to tell precisely who they all are at this moment. But-
Betty Revard.
Having said that-
Is now joining.
All right, and welcome, welcome to everybody who's joined us and everybody who is streaming and watching and listening as we proceed. Liz, let me ask you, now I see some names on my screen. I guess these are folks who have signed up to speak as guests. Do you want me to just take them in turn? That's probably-
I'm happy to read the names unless you'd prefer to do so.
Well, I can, I can read them. Let me just say, I hope everyone has read the protocols that apply for this digital meeting. We, the members of the legislature are all eager to hear from everyone who has a desire to speak or to submit thoughts or comments. And the first person, at least on my computer screen, who I believe has signed up to speak and address the redistricting joint committee is Lisa Clements. And so Liz, are you able to unmute Ms. Clements?
Ms. Clements, you will actually need to unmute yourself. We cannot unmute you from our end.
I just did that, so hello. I had a feeling I was going to be first for some reason. So thank you Chairman Trump, Chairman Howell, and the committee members for this opportunity to speak. My name is Lisa Clements and I am the Director of Public Affairs for Planned Parenthood South Atlantic. I'm here as a constituent and also as a representative of my organization. For us, there are three court issues facing lawmakers that we believe you should address as you work through the redistricting process. One, we want to see our communities kept whole with fair maps. With the House of Delegates moving to single-member districts, for me and for our organization, it's very hard to picture what that's going to look like in areas like mine, for example. I live in Morgantown-
Janet Thompson.
Where we currently have five members representing the county. As we move to single-member districts-
Is now exiting.
It is crucial that we don't end up with gerrymandered districts that create division. Gerrymandering contributes to the hyper-partisanship in our politics and it allows politicians to ignore the people they represent. We want to see districts that encourage community cohesion with representatives that can truly advocate for their constituents. This leads to our second issue of concern, which is the transparency of the process. And I applaud that we've had so many public hearings and we have a virtual option. I'm really grateful that that's available and that allows for the transparency we want to see. The state lawmakers and administrators must protect the freedom to vote and demonstrate what full participation looks like. We must do all that we can to make the promise of democracy real for people. And if we want a government that is truly of, by, and for the people, we need strengthened freedom to vote, such as removing barriers to voter registration, expanding polling locations, making those processes easier for people, and to have fair representation to ensure that our elected leaders are accountable to their constituents. Third, we want to see an effort to draw maps that are nonpartisan. Partisan redistricting puts political considerations ahead of community interests. Allowing politicians to choose their constituents rather than the other way around only leads to a negative impact on our democracy and it marginalizes a significant block of voters statewide. We already have an issue with voter disinterest and turnout in West Virginia. And to live in a truly fair democracy where all voices are heard and represented, we must ensure every eligible person can cast a ballot and that their vote actually counts. I believe we need independent, nonpartisan, and fair redistricting that ends that manipulation. And with that, I thank you very much for your time and your consideration tonight.
Lisa, thank you very much for joining us and for your thoughtful comments. And I will say that I hope everyone was able to hear you as well and as clearly as I could. You came through loud and clear. And so, you know, I don't want to jinx this by saying that, you know, this has achieved a success at this point. We still have more to go. But this is our first attempt at this and, but I was able to hear everything you said and very, very well and clearly. So thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you. And I'm glad my dog didn't bark. You all have a good evening.
You too. And you're, of course, welcome to stay and hear the other speakers. I should make note for everybody that if our technology works, as we are hoping it will, we are making a record, an archive of all these public comments that are being made by people who have signed up to speak and address the committee. And those comments will be available not just to legislators who are on the redistricting committees of the House and Senate, but to all members of the West Virginia House of Delegates and the West Virginia Senate as we move forward in our process. Now, Liz, the next person I would recognize, I guess, to speak is Thornton Cooper.
Mr. Cooper, please unmute yourself.
Okay, do I need to fix my camera too?
You're welcome to turn your video on as well.
I'm trying. Why? It's, I'm hitting it. I'm hitting the icon. Wonder, give me ideas of why it wouldn't, it's working, but it's not on your-
Yep, Thornton.
You have any help for me?
I can hear you loud and clear, but I don't see your image.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I, it says turn camera one and I'm trying to do it, but your computer is, your thing is not responding, which is very frustrating.
You're welcome to proceed just via the audio if you'd like.
Okay, well, let me, I'm doing redo my camera. Can you hear me?
Thornton, I can hear you, but I cannot yet see you.
All right, well, unfortunately, there's, there's a problem with, there's a glitch here. So I will just speak to you, all right? What I was going to show you is I submitted a map to Daze Redistricting today and it had, I've already completed the 100 single-member district plan that I promised you all I would do. So it, Daze Redistricting is a website where citizens can draw their own redistricting maps. You all have an entity called Mapitude, but Daze Redistricting is free. So anyone in the world who has access to the internet can go to Daze Redistricting, get a password.
Uh-oh. Liz, I seem to have lost Thornton's audio.
It appears he has, he's coming back.
Hello?
Thornton, I can hear you again. We lost you momentarily. The last thing that I heard was that you had said you had submitted a map to Daze Redistricting and you were, I think, explaining what that is.
Right, okay. So since you can't see it, I've, I'd already printed off the map. Obviously, you can't make out the detail, but let me tell you what, what I've accomplished with this, okay? And of course, I will be submitting it to your, your committee through email. But what I did was divide West Virginia into 100 single-member districts. As I've told you in the previous meetings, it's extremely important to me that you, you keep things less than 1% from perfection. Notwithstanding the fact that the federal case law lets you go 5%, that case law is antiquated. Back in the 1960s when they came up with that case law for the House of Delegates and state senators across the country, you didn't have the technology to do calculations simultaneously with 100, 100 separate districts. You basically were in a different age when I was taking calculus 55 years ago. We had to use slide rules. We couldn't multiply six things times each other. It was quicker to get the logarithms and add them up. So we live in a completely different age 55 years from now. And I can prove that it works because I've done it. So my biggest, my biggest variation of 17937 is the optimum. It was plus 149 and minus 162. So every one of the 100 districts is less than 1% from the optimum figure of 17937. So that's the first thing I accomplished. The next thing I wanted to do was to minimize the number of counties that had fewer, that had less than 1% of the population and therefore less than the average delegate size. That would be split in the redistricting process. So there are 23 of those counties, including the one that, that Senator Trump lives in. And I managed to come up with the redistricting plan that only cut up two of them. So the other 21 are made parts of single-member districts, either by attaching another county, two counties together that are full plus a third county or just the examples of, I had a list made and the lists were, if you bear with me now. So I, so Wetzel is in House District 8, Tolleran Pleasant and House District 9, Ritchie and Gilbert in House District 10, Work in House District 15, Roan in House District 16, Summers in House District 42, Calhoun and Clay in House District 58, Monroe in House District 61, Pocahontas and Pendleton in House District 63, Braxton in House District 66, Lewis in House District 67, Morgan, I say, go back, Barber in House District 69, Taylor in House District 70, Dodridge in House District 72, Tucker in House District 85, Grant in House District 86, and Morgan in House District 90. There are only two counties that I could not put, that were under the population of 1% that I couldn't put in there and that, and that was because I either had to cut them or cut somebody else. So and those were Hardy and Webster. Okay, now, also in the plan, I was able to make, to, to come up with single-member districts in which 66 of them, not including the ones I've just discussed, but 66 of the remaining ones were wholly within one county. So Hancock had one, Ohio two, Marshall one, Wood County four, Jackson one, Putnam three, Cavill five, two in Wayne, one in Lincoln, one in Boone, one in Logan, one in Mingo, one in McDowell, two in Mercer, three in Raleigh, one in Fayette, ten in Canaw, where I live, one in Nicholas, one in Greenbrier, one in Randolph, one in Upsher, three in Harrison, three in Marion, five in Montegalia, one in Preston, one in Mineral, six in Berkeley, and three in Jefferson. And the remaining districts involve pieces of counties. But I think that's quite an accomplishment out of 100. And so I want to show you, it can be done and you can do all these things that also keep it less than, with a variance of less than 1%. I will be emailing this stuff to, to you, the information. I'm sorry that the video didn't work, but I hope you heard me. Could, could you hear me okay? I can't hear.
I mean, Thornton, I, I was able to hear you loud and clear.
All right, I'm sorry. So, so anyway, you'll get all that as I promised. So all my Senate districts were less than 1% variation in my Senate redistricting plan, which is also one Daze Redistricting and of course, my congressional redistricting plan. I was 24 and up to numerical perfection on that. So I will be submitting to this and contacting your staff so they can be able to actually use it. But I want to make sure that you know that all three of these projects are done in terms of your ability to read them yourself down to where every census block in West Virginia is placed because you can zoom in on Daze Redistricting to see that. So thank you very much.
Mr. Cooper, thank you very much. It's, you know, clear to me that you spent a great deal of time on this and it's an issue about which you care deeply. And we're grateful for your effort and for this submission when we get it as well as the others that you have already provided to us. Okay, I think the next person that I'm seeing who has signed up to speak is Betty Revard. Betty, are you there?
Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm here. I, I got bumped off the video on my laptop, but I've called back in on my phone. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Betty Revard. I'm an independent-
Citizen Kane listener.
I just got interrupted- By someone joining, but I, I just, let me confirm that you can hear me again.
Betty, I, we can still hear you. So you, yeah, it sounded as if maybe that was an announcement that someone else joined, but you go right ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm, I'm a, an independent volunteer citizen advocate with the legislature. And I, I'm based in Charleston. I pretty much second what Lisa Clements said. I, I prefer an independent commission, but of course, we need to work with the system we currently have. And I also want to encourage you to be as transparent and nonpartisan as possible. And I really appreciate your setting up the virtual hearings because even though I've had the third booster shot, I'm being very careful about going to inside meetings. There are a couple of other principles I want to mention, which I think are also consistent with what Lisa said. One is the need to respect the current boundaries for counties, cities, and other municipalities when you draw up the districts. And second, which is based on my membership in the NAACP, is to keep minority communities together. I have a few suggestions related to specific districts. In terms of the congressional districts, I would prefer that you, of course, base, base where you draw the line on the numbers, but draw it in such a way that we have a northern region and a southern, a northern district and a southern district. My understanding is that the line would be somewhere north of Canaw County. In terms of my own Senate district, which is the 8th district, I would like to suggest that you not pull in small parts of other counties to change, you know, for partisan reasons. I've heard rumors about pulling in parts of Roan and Jackson counties and that sounds to me like a really bad idea. My first choice would be to expand within Canaw County if that's possible. And then I also wanted to address the 37th, current 37th House District. And I would like to suggest that you keep this district as much as possible within the city limits of Charleston. I think right now it goes, I'm not sure exactly where else it goes, but the rumor I heard was that there was consideration of adding Dunbar. I know that in the last redistricting, there was a part of the West Side Hill that was carved out that was done for partisan reasons by Democrats. And it makes no sense to me. I've done a lot of canvassing, especially in the, in the 2018 election and especially on the west side and, and it just totally cut through neighborhoods and on the same block and did not respect the principle of current boundaries or keeping minority communities together. So thank you again for the opportunity to comment and good luck with your work.
Betty, let me thank you. Thank you for making time to join us tonight and, and for time to share with, with us your thoughts and ideas. If I, if I didn't say this before, I should say it now or before our public hearing ends, everyone who's interested in doing so is invited to submit to the Joint Redistricting Committee written comments. We've received them in the form of emails, letters, maps. Mr. Cooper is among a number of people who have submitted maps that they've crafted that they would like for the legislature to consider. And it is possible to do that through our redistricting website, which is a tab under the legislature's webpage. Again, Betty, thank you very much. The last, I think the last person that we have who signed up to speak tonight joined us a little while ago and that is, I think, Janet Thompson. Janet, are you there?
Ms. Thompson, you can unmute yourself using star six.
Yes, sir, I'm here. Thank you. I thank you for the opportunity. I was just listening to the other callers and I basically concur with what they're saying and I prefer now to submit my suggestions and writings and comments because it seems that I'm not quite that knowledgeable about things that have happened with the last redistricting. And so I've been studying the census data. And so I just prefer to do that at this point. I appreciate the opportunity to speak anyway and I want to thank the other callers for their input.
Alrighty, well, Ms. Thompson, thank you very much for joining us and for your comments. And I will say again, you are absolutely welcome. We would be grateful for anything else you wanted to submit to the Joint Redistricting Committee, whether it's a map or written comments in whatever form.
Yes, sir.
And thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you all for having us.
All right, now, Ms. Schenzelors, is there anyone else that you're aware of who's either in the waiting room or has expressed or signed up to speak tonight? That I, anybody I have not recognized?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our roster for tonight.
All right, well, I'm going to go out on a limb and pronounce this a success, a successful test run at an attempt at a digital public hearing, even though we didn't have audio for everybody. Actually, we didn't have audio for every, anybody except for Lisa Clements, but we had two people who were able to share with us thoughts and comments dialing in and, and Mr. Cooper as well. Now, I will make the following announcements. We're going to try to do this again tomorrow night, starting at 6:00 PM, in the same fashion, in a digital platform on this Microsoft Teams application, starting at 6:00. And I think I'm correct in saying we've already had some people who have signed up expressing an interest in speaking tomorrow night to share more information with us. And I will also announce, we've issued a press release on this, but the first meeting, first formal meeting of the Senate Committee on Redistricting is going to occur on the 23rd. That's Thursday, the 23rd of September. At, I believe we set it for 3 o'clock PM and it will occur in the Senate Judiciary Committee Room in the Capitol. That's room 210, I think, in the West Wing. And it will be an organizational meeting. It's not anticipated that the committee will commence the consideration of any maps at that organizational meeting. But we will, I think, map out, try to map out our, our schedule for our future work, which will eventually include the consideration of maps. And I don't know yet when the second meeting will be after the 23rd, but it won't, it won't be long. I'm still, I think Chairman Howell and I are still operating under the latest information we've had from our presiding officers, the Speaker of the House and the President of the Senate, that a special session can likely be expected sometime in the, beginning in the second week of October. Let me pause there and recognize Chairman Howell. If, see if Gary, are there any- Let me pause there and recognize Chairman Howell, if, see if, Gary, are there any announcements you want to make or anything you want to add?
No, I think you've covered it. The House is working on a date for our first meeting, but that has not been set in stone yet.
All right, well, if, if not, if there's nothing else, then let me, again, on behalf of Chairman Howell and all the members of the House and the Senate, Joint Redistricting Committee, express our gratitude to everyone who's joined us tonight and shared thoughts and comments and their views regarding redistricting. This is very helpful to all of us. And with that, I guess we can conclude this public hearing. Thank you, everybody.